Good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us for Exploring Economic Development with MEDC. My name is Meredith Harris, the Executive Director, and I am joined this morning by our moderator and Director of Communications Jill Morin.
Hi, Meredith.
Hi Jill. Good morning.
It's a great Wednesday morning. We've already had a really busy day.
We have had a busy day.
We had our great Executive Committee meeting this morning. So Economic Development is on the brain and we're really excited for today's guest, which we're not going to get to yet. But for all of you joining us live on Facebook and YouTube, hello, make sure you comment so we know where you're watching from, what your questions are. And if you're watching this on the replay with WMCT TV, our information is right down here. So you can send us an email or give us a call with any questions, comments, concerns. Send them to Meredith. She'll get it.
Get right on it.
I don't even have a phone line here.
Well, that's good. We'll keep it.
It's kind of a good thing. So Meredith, tell us, let's recap about last episode.
Yeah, so we're really excited. So today we have with us special guest President of the City Council, Mike Ossing. And we're excited to talk to him today. We kind of talked a little bit about him last week with our guest. So we'll talk about Arthur Bergeron, amazing episode last week, two weeks ago. He, one of the founders of MEDC, former city councillor, resident of Marlboro for many, many years. Just somebody that's been involved in economic development in Marlboro forever. Great guy. So we had a wonderful conversation with him. We poked fun a little bit at President Ossing. So we're excited to have him today so we can continue to do that. But really excited to talk to him today about MEDC, the city council, kind of what is our involvement with the city council in moving Marlboro forward? So with that, want to turn it over to City Council President Mike Ossing and welcome you to the podcast this morning.
Hello Jill, hello Meredith. Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. So tell us a little bit about yourself. You're also Marlboro born and raised, correct?
Not born.
Not born.
Not born. So I don't get credit like our mayor does is to say I was born in the hospital here in Marlboro. I was actually born overseas in Germany.
No kidding? I didn't know that.
Parents were in the services, came back to Marlboro though a year and a half later. So I've been here for 60 of my 61 years. So I'll call that pretty good. But it's still not a townie because it's not a...
You weren't born here.
Wasn't born here. But I did go through the school system and they did me extremely well. Further that by going on, yes, so Jill, kudos.
We should have pulled up...
Oh, we meant to do that.
Oh, thank goodness you didn't do that.
We meant to get your high school picture. We did.
Alright guys, keep an eye on our social media this week. We'll be sharing some interesting, really endearing yearbook pictures.
Photos. Absolutely.
I had hair back then.
Alright, so... Well, before we go, sorry, sorry. I'm really boxy today.
You're already cutting me off, okay.
I'm cutting you off.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we say hi to the people that are joining us. So Andrea...
Good morning Andrea.
Is joining us. Thank you. She says, "Good morning." Rob Schlachter from the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce is here. Good morning, Rob. And Karen is saying, "Hello, Mike, hello, MEDC."
Good morning Karen.
So if you're, if you're watching us, make sure you comment so you know, we know you're here. And Rob says, "Hey, hair is overrated."
Thanks, Rob.
So don't worry about it.
So we did cut you off. So went to Marlboro High School. How long have you been on the city council? And I guess my question for you is tell us a little bit about the city council for people who might not, you know, be, I don't know, I guess not as in tune to what you guys are doing on a regular basis.
Yeah, so I've been on the, fortunate to be elected 11 times. So I'm finishing up my 22nd year on the city council. And it's a hobby. I love it. I've kind of directed my focus towards the finance end of things. But if you want to know a little bit about it, watch episode one of the Mayor's Government Academy. So I'll put a plug in for the Mayor's Government Academy. We have a session there that talks about the city council, but the council does three things. We enact laws, we appropriate funding, and we approve special permits. Those are the three functions of the city council. So enacting laws or city ordinances, approving money, the budget, setting taxes, and special permits. Someone wants to come in and wants something special from our ordinances, those are the three things that a city council does.
And so there's 11 city councillors, right?
That's correct. 11 city councillors, four at large representing the entire city, and seven are individual ward councillors. We've divided the city up into seven wards. Each ward's broken up into two precincts. So you have seven ward councillors, four at large councillors, and they're elected every two years.
Every two years. And it's an election year?
And it's an election year.
Right. So we'll see a lot from all of you guys in the next couple of months.
That is correct.
Which is great. Great.
Karen says, "22 years. Thank you."
Yeah. All wonderful, all great, 22 years, right?
Well, you're sure you're going to poke some fun in some of those 22 years, but yes, there have been some decisions that have gone well and some that, you know, we'd like to look back on and say, "Okay, you learn from them and move on."
So speaking of that, right, so there is one vote that we dug out. We went back into the archives to take a look. Mr. Bergeron last week talked a little bit about the hotel tax and kind of the origins of MEDC and how the funding comes to fruition. Did you vote for the funding?
I did not vote for the funding for MEDC.
I think he told us that last week, so we didn't believe him. And so we went back and took a look. But take us back to that timeframe, you know, what was kind of the conversation? We've heard that Mr. Mayor then was City Council President, Arthur Vigent, said, "This is a big deal. Everybody should get behind this." But there was obviously some, you know, not, I don't want to say controversy, but just differing of opinions on whether we should do this or not, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And for me, it boiled down to, I am a small government, small tax kind of individual. I don't like having the tax. Recognizing taxes are necessary to do government, but to put another tax on, I was not in favor of.
Sure.
But when I look back...
Which I can appreciate.
But when I look back at that decision, you know, I say, "Oh, if I knew now what I didn't know then, I would have voted for it." Because it has been a windfall for the city of Marlboro, the Marlboro Economic Development Corporation. I mean, it's just evolved tremendously and I still think we're one of the envy of the communities and the Commonwealth.
I'm not just agreeing because I'm the Executive Director of the organization, but talking to other economic development professionals, not only in Massachusetts, but in New England and across the country. The model that we have in Marlboro is so unique. It's, it's working, you know, people often, our neighbors are saying, you know, "How do you guys do it? How are we doing it?" And I think the hotel tax and the funding is what sets us apart, you know? We can get to work. We don't have to be asking people for membership fees and this, that, and the other thing. We can actually go do the work that we need to do, which is a game changer.
For anyone joining us for the first time, can we just very quickly, and either one of you, just tell us, how is MEDC funded? Just real, really super quick. Do you want to take that one?
Sure. So initially it was set up as $10,000 or $25,000 in the city budget back in 2010, which was called the 2010 Corporation. And then we evolved. And then we would go out banging on doors at the time, asking businesses to support this cause so that we could fund it. The business community actually came to us and said, "Hey, as a business community," and this is the hotels, and great job by Rich Tominek, and the hotel owners said, "Hey, we're okay if you put on an extra 2% room tax on, on anybody that stays in our hotels and that money will then go to fund economic development." And it has been a, I mean, I'm to this day still amazed at the success that the funding has provided the opportunity. I mean, the funding is one thing, but then you need the talent and the people to go out and drive and actually bring the businesses to Marlboro. And that's, that's the unique aspect of MEDC that other communities just don't have. And it, from speed of permitting, business climate, friendly climate, and what, why that's important? It helps stabilize and maintain a tax rate that we, we compete with anybody in the surrounding area. That our taxes are lower residential, the commercial gang may not be as excited about it, but residentially, they can't, they can't compete with us. And it's, it's great.
Well, we, and we talked about it this morning, and I think Jill and I have actually been struggling a little bit over the last, I don't know, two weeks or so during Economic Development Week, trying to come up with little short clips and trying to explain this, expanding the pie, right? And, and I get it, I understand it, but it's hard to put it into words. And so a lot of the goal of this podcast is to try to explain it to people, to understand and to kind of put it on a level where it's not complicated. And Michael Murphy this morning actually, you know, had a great quote that I thought kind of, it clicked for me a little bit, talking about people coming into your restaurants and people spending money in your community. You know, that can very easily translate to additional firefighters in your community. You know, that's the money that's going toward pay for additional services. Those are some of the benefits that you see for companies coming in and increasing the revenue that's coming into your municipality. And at the end of the day, that's, that's what we're here to do, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, alright, the MEDC, we're now in existence, forget it, the vote has taken place, we've won you over, I think, which is great. So how often, or most often, where, where do we intersect, right? So I think that's important for people to understand kind of how we work with the city council, with the mayor. You know, often pre-COVID, now we're virtually, but I was at city council meetings for Urban Affairs most often, sometimes for Finance. You know, those are kind of the two big ones that were with you guys. But what, in your words or in your, you know, your view, what is the benefit of MEDC to the city council? Or, you know, how do we interact the most together?
Sure. Couple, easy ones. So first is zoning changes. So if we want to change the zoning, whether it's Donald Lynch Boulevard, or the Downtown Village, or Route 20 East, we use MEDC to funnel resources to help us facilitate what that'll look like. So that's one. Bringing the businesses, whether it's through TIFs or just businesses to Marlboro. Not every business, I want to make sure everybody's clear, not every business, and there's many of them that come to Marlboro, do not get a TIF. It's only a handful. And they've got to meet special criteria for that. And I'm sure we'll talk about that later.
Right.
But, but bringing those businesses into Marlboro is extremely important. We want to keep our office parks and business industrial facilities full. And other towns struggle. We've made it simple or convenient to have office, you know. Why, why does a BJ's want to come to Marlboro when our tax rate is higher than Westboro? I mean, there's advantages to coming here that, that they see. And so we want that revenue from the businesses to come in because ultimately it helps lower the residential end of the tax burden and allows us to get a new elementary school, a new library, a new fire station that we're, that we're talking about, without going for a Prop 2.5 override, or without raising taxes to some... You know, we've been able to do all these things and still have steady, predictable, adjustable tax rates that, you know, are lower than our surrounding communities. And that's really, you know, testament to the council, MEDC for the foresight of getting businesses in here, the mayor and his, his department heads to work with it, to let the permitting process go through efficiently and effectively. And again, it's a team effort. I can't put, oh, you know, it's this individual. But MEDC is the focal point. If you want to, if you want to be, have a business in Marlboro, it just makes it so easy. Whether it's a simple golf range at the west end of town that wants to come in, or, you know, the 800 employees from BJ's.
From BJ's.
It's really...
Well, and we were talking this morning too about the, the importance of kind of that, building those relationships with those companies too, right? I mean, so once they, once you attract them to your community, that's wonderful. They're here. But you want to make sure that they're getting involved in the schools and that, you know, that they're participating in things. And they're not just here and you don't just drive by them every day, that they're an active participant in our community. And that's a lot of what we do as well. Once they're here, try to, try to make sure that we continue that relationship. And then when they're ready to grow, hopefully, they choose to do it here in Marlboro. You know, so there's a lot of benefits to bringing them in, but you know, that's just a few.
Right. No, having the Boston Scientifics, the SciTex, the Logics, Quest, you know, having them in our city, being able to work with the schools, to do mentorships, partnerships, training, STEM programs. I mean, it's just...
Dynamic.
It's dynamic, but you'll, you'll see that as our students work through the school system and it gives them opportunities that they wouldn't normally have in a city or town that doesn't have that luxury afforded to them.
Right.
I've got some...
Do you have a comment?
I have some comments here. I just want to make sure that we, that we say hi to you. Ryan, I'm not sure if Ryan's joined us before, but Ryan is saying, "Good morning from the mayor's office."
Hi Ryan. Ryan is the new, new employee in the mayor's office. Welcome. Thanks for joining the podcast and happy to have you. He's also a city councillor.
He's also a city councillor in the town of Raymond, city of Raymond, and doing an excellent job down there. So thanks, Ryan.
Thanks for joining us.
And we've got Joanne joining us and Dottie joining us. Happy Wednesday. Good morning.
Good morning, Dottie.
Karen says, "Thank you for the work that you do to keep our taxes low."
Yeah.
I've got to say, as someone, I grew up in Marlboro. My dad lives in Marlboro. And before we purchased our home in Clinton, which is where my husband's from, so I'm not betraying Marlboro. It's just, my husband's a townie there and...
Know that feeling. So that's okay.
Free babysitting. For our situation. But I was, I always had the perception that taxes were unbelievable, unbelievably high in Marlboro.
Not the case.
And I literally, I think I've just heard that from like my parents maybe 10, 20 years ago. Because I mean, I lived, I'm 37 years old. So I've always heard that Marlboro is, is expensive to live in because of taxes. But we did a breakdown this week.
Yeah, it's not the case.
Not at all.
And if you look at the table too, it's not only low, but stable. And I think that's the whole goal, right?
Yeah, because if you watch some of the surrounding towns, their taxes adjust or swing wildly.
Right.
You know, going up four, five, 600 bucks. And we kind of tried as a council, with the mayor's office, to keep it as a steady predictor. I call them adjustments because the taxes don't, they go down only if the budget is, you know, really, really small. And we've got some windfall for local receipts or cherry or state aid. So, you know, you want to keep the taxes where people can predict them.
Right.
And make it attractive here. And in what I call the double bonus portion of the program, the services supplied by the city of Marlboro far outweigh any of the surrounding communities. I mean, you can't touch...
Absolutely.
Again, I'm prejudiced, I'll say that right now, but I'll put it up against...
I have to pay for my trash stickers every week.
Pay for what? What's that?
Exactly. And it's always like, you know, Sunday night when we're getting ready for the school week. And I'm like, "Oh, I gotta run down to Cumbie's to go get trash stickers."
Yeah, we don't have to worry about that in Marlboro. It's great.
But you do pay for the, you do pay for the trash, but it's built into your tax rate, right?
And it's still lower.
And it's still lower than the, other communities' higher taxes and have to pay for their trash.
Well, and we mentioned this last week, but I think it's important to always mention it, that just because the tax rate might go down, doesn't mean that your tax bill will go down either. That's not always the case, right? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I call it my A plus B plus C equals D formula, right? So try to make it as simple as I can. You take the budget.
Right.
Plus any local receipts. And local receipts are your water, your sewer, your excise tax, your marriage license, your dog license, any fee, building fees, any fees the city collects.
Yeah.
So that's the second part. And the third part is called the cherry sheets of state aid. Those three items, I'm sorry, those, cut that backwards. The cherry sheet, state aid, the local receipts, and the taxes have to equal the budget.
Right.
So we take the, we set the budget in May. So we do it a little backwards. We set the budget, haven't figured out how to pay for it yet. Then in November, we try to figure out how to pay for it. And then you pay for it by subtracting, you know, so $174 million budget. State gives us about $37 million. Local receipts are about the same. So we're looking to raise about $110 million to pay for the budget. So that all goes to taxes. So that's, there's 13, about 13,000 taxpayers, 11,000-ish or so are residents.
And that's the pie, right?
That's your pie, right? So these 13,000 tax bills that get sent out in the city of Marlboro have to make up that portion of the equation to cover the budget. And so we have to balance, so our goal is to try to keep the residential one as stable as possible. Same thing with the commercial side, you know, without losing everyone, assessed values then go, you know, mess things up. And if you're watching or trying to sell a house, you know right now it's a great time to sell a house. The challenging part is that means the assessed value of your house, because it's based on sales, end up increasing. So your assessed value of your house...
Goes up.
Goes up.
But, so your bill goes up. But I think, okay, so just to round that out, right? So the pie, right, here's the pie that needs to be paid for. Then here's the people that are going to be paying for the pie. And if there's more companies that are helping offset that burden, the slice that each resident is going to pay is smaller.
There you go. You've got it.
Jill, ding ding ding, I think we did it.
So, but that's the important part of the economic development equation. Because yes, I mean, we bring in residential units. There's a, you know, complex or two, or maybe a subdivision or two, but not at the rate of which you can bring in commercial or industrial facilities that can help. And they bring in a lot more tax revenue.
And they're taxed at a higher rate.
And they're...
That's the thing that I think a lot of people don't understand.
Right.
Yeah.
Or don't remember from economics classes in high school, which I know I took.
Well, not every, split tax, not every city and town has one. I mean, Northboro I think is a single, single rate of, if Marlboro's tax rate right now, it's 14 and change for the residential, 24 and change for commercial. If we had a single tax bill, a single payer, everybody pays the same amount, it'd be about a little over $17. So, which would dramatically drop the commercial...
Bills.
Bills, but dramatically rise the residential.
Right.
I would not be sitting in this chair at that point in time if that were to go through. I mean, that's just, I mean, it's been set up this way. And again, the goal is steady, predictable adjustments so that you can, you can plan for something so that you don't have wild swings in your tax bill.
Which nobody wants.
No.
No. Do you have another comment?
We have a few comments.
Okay, let's hear it.
So they've been kind of coming in at different points of our conversation. Andrea just said that BJ coming to the city is amazing.
I agree.
Yep.
Agreed.
And there was some clarifying questions about the funds on economic, from economic development. So I'm going to kind of smush a few of these comments. So Joanne, I see your comment. Karen, I see your comment. Let's see, let's go to this one. "What efforts from the city council should I be paying attention to or getting involved with so I can feel invested?" And a follow-up comment on that is that Karen's saying that, "I see a lot of conversations happening on the residents' Facebook page, but they don't ever really tell us how to get involved." That's a great, great question.
Do you want to take that or do you want my two cents?
You can start and I'll be happy to follow.
Yeah, so I would, I also see a lot of those conversations that are taking place. There's a lot of information out there and I want to talk about this a little bit in terms of BJ's as well, and we can, we can get to that. But the best way for people to get involved, watch the meetings, right? Or go to the website, look at the meeting minutes, you know, reach out to your councillors. You guys are all readily available and accessible to answer questions. And a lot of times, the, the comments and the, the stuff that's out there on the internet is not always factual. You know, so it's important to remember that. I mean, I, we just went through this with the BJ's TIF. I, there was comments I was reading in some of those pages that it just simply was not true. You know, and I want to get to that in a few minutes because they, you know, we, the BJ's TIF, there's been a lot of conversation about it, a lot of discussion about it, you know, but I think at the end of the day, a lot of people don't understand exactly how the TIF works.
Yeah.
So we'll get to that, but I'm going to let you answer, you know, is there anything else people should do to feel invested or to get involved?
To get involved. Yep.
Well, to get involved, you can pull papers starting last week. You can feel, if you want to run, now's the time to do it. The, really, watch the meetings. I can't, just to get a feel for how things work. Now, granted, some of the stuff moves quick, but all the agendas are online.
Yeah.
The city website, you can, you can read them all. And again, if you're in it, you understand it. If you're not, it's kind of, it can be a little daunting. But, you know, if there's something you like, if you happen to be interested in zoning changes, or you're interested in the finance element, you know, you can pick those ones out and watch how it trends, you know, works its way through. And then another plug if I can, if you want to get on a committees, you know, the boards of commissions throughout the city, always looking for people. That's a great way to get involved and start, you know, the planning, the conservation, the ZBA, building, cultural council. There's so many committees you can get involved with. So if you, if you want to get involved, you can. The challenge is, people are busy and don't have the time. And so they're really relying on the people that A, they elect or appoint to these boards to do the right thing.
Right.
And, you know, hopefully we do a good job. And for us that are elected, if we don't think we're doing a good job, they'll let us know in November.
Or they'll, they'll let you know on their...
Well, and I think COVID, as many challenges as COVID brought, one of the beauties of it was that everything is so readily available now. I mean, you can watch the city council meeting from Monday night and then go and watch the Site Plan Review Committee meeting on Tuesday. Like you can follow these projects all the way through, which you weren't really able to do it as much before.
No, and that's partially because the governor had the state of emergency, so he allowed the remote participation. So the mayor and the IT department have done a really good job so that, in the past, you could only watch city council and school committee on the cable station.
Right.
But now we've, we've invested funds through the, the money that's come in through the COVID grants to get Teams rooms, which is Zoom, but city uses Teams rooms. So you can watch Planning Board, ZBA, Cultural Council, Council on Aging, Library, you know, Historical, any of the boards or commissions. You can now watch it.
Right.
And see it. Before you'd have to go to the meeting. Now you can watch the meeting.
Right.
So, you know, and I think the watching part will continue.
Which is great.
Which is great. Yep.
Yeah. You had another one? Was it from Joanne, I think you said?
Yes. So Joanne had a few comments and actually Spencer, I didn't say hi to you yet. "Hi Spencer, we're glad you're here."
Spencer is actually the one that tapes the city council meeting.
Yes.
We're giving Spencer the night off tonight.
He said, "You gotta love the city councillors."
That's right. You do.
Awesome. Well, Joanne had another question. She said, "What do you think is the most important topic right now in the city?"
Well, the budget, right?
Yeah. It's, it's getting the budget because the budget really sets the table for how the departments are going to perform during the course of the year. You know, so getting that set early and hats off to Council Irish and the Finance Committee. Actually, all 11 councils were at the Finance Committee meeting on Monday night and you can watch that on. You can watch, you can watch the reruns if you really have trouble sleeping at night. They're there either through the cable station or on the city website.
Yeah.
But they did a real nice job asking questions of department heads and ultimately approved the budget, which will now be presented to the council, for the full council. We'll also have a public hearing next Monday night. So if you want to comment on the budget, you're allowed to do that as well.
That's awesome. Alright, can I get into TIFs now?
Well, I guess. Keep your comments coming, guys.
Yes, keep them coming. Excited to answer questions. And so I really want to talk to you about this, not only because you, you've got the finance background. You seem to really understand the mechanics. I think people sometimes don't understand the mechanics of a TIF. And we're constantly battling this, you know, is it on all the taxes that come in? Why are they getting a tax break? Why aren't they paying any taxes? And I think it's important for people to understand that it's only on the improved value. And I can say that, right, but what exactly does that mean? And I think we have a graphic that we're going to throw up at some point. You know, so we're going to take BJ's as the example. That's the one that everybody's been talking about. So BJ's is coming in, they're putting in an estimated $36 million into the campus, which is an existing building in Marlboro, bringing 800 onsite jobs, actually going to be more like 1,100 jobs, you know, from day to day. Those people are going to be eating in our restaurants, shopping in our places, staying at our hotels. They're going to be stimulating our economy. Out of that $36 million that they're investing in the property, the $8 million garage is the only piece of the project that is increasing the assessed value. And the assessed value increment is only $1.8 million. So the savings that they're receiving, the TIF, is only on that $1.8 million.
That is correct.
Right? And so, you know, what, how, can you, what are your thoughts on that? You know, what is the benefits of that? And how do we, how do we make sure that people understand how it actually works?
So we have two hours, right?
No. No, we have 15 minutes.
So I, I guess that's the most common question I get asked is, you know, why are you giving some outside company a TIF? You know, "I'm a homeowner. I want to put it in a garage on. Why can't I get a TIF?"
Right.
So the simple, though not popular answer is, the legislature has set it up as a business attraction tool. Tool, not a, you know, go upgrade your home, you know, it doesn't do it. Of course, not a popular answer.
Right.
Alright, but...
But the reality.
But the reality is, it's only available to businesses that come to cities and towns. So, so, you know, over the course of time, what have we had? Maybe 30, 40 TIFs, I think. I mean, only maybe 10 are active right now. They've served the city extremely well.
Right.
I mean, again, the trade-off for the city is the relief in some of the future taxes on the new growth part.
Right.
Is offset, do we see it's offset by the improvements to the facility? The people that come into this, and how many jobs are you bringing in?
Right.
You know, and do we see that we're going to get return on that investment or that tax relief over that period of time? And unequivocally, the answer's been yes. I mean, the city has done extremely well. But the press, and I shouldn't say the press, social media will tell you that, "Hey, they're giving money away." Haven't given a dime away. The, if you want to use BJ's as the example. That site, that site pays $1 million a year in taxes. They will continue to pay a million dollars a year in taxes.
Oh, hold on. You're frozen.
Oh.
Uh-oh. Meredith, fill time for two seconds.
Well, so sometimes people don't understand that the money that goes in, the money that's invested, doesn't always translate to the assessed value change either, right? You know, so you put in $36 million and the only, the only dollar amount that actually qualifies for the TIF is that $1.8 million incremental assessment change. And the other piece too, that I think people sometimes don't understand is the, the reason that companies often apply for the program or want to be involved in the program is this state tax, the investment tax credits, which is on per head that they're adding in terms of jobs, right? So a lot of times when a company is looking at the EDIP program, they need the municipal buy-in almost in order to kind of pass go and go on to the state portion of the program.
That, no, that's correct. Am I back on camera there?
Yes, you're back.
He's back.
Apologize for that, folks.
Sorry, guys.
That's another camera I've broken. I'm going to talk to the makeup artist somewhere. So, but back to the TIF. City wants to get jobs.
Yep.
Because the jobs now feed hotels, restaurants, small businesses in the community, gas stations, you pick it. People coming in now support that. And then the exchange is, we're going to give a tax relief to the new portion.
New portion.
So that $1.8 million garage, so for those of you out there with a calculator, that's a $44,000 a year tax bill on the garage. We're going to give some percentage of that.
Right.
Over 20 years, relief.
Right.
All right. So so you ask yourself, is the trade off to bring eight hundred people into the city of Marlboro? And then it's a corp, remember, corporate headquarters means everybody's going to fly into Marlboro
Right.
when they start flying again.
Right.
Into Marlboro, stay at our hotels, eat in our restaurants, use our our local uh businesses throughout the
Services.
The city.
Yep.
And ask yourself, is that a fair trade off that we would, we see a return on our investment?
Right.
Unequivocally, yes.
Well, and also the, they're paying permit fees. I mean, there's so many things, right?
So so, okay, so so now, so in addition to the eight million dollar garage, they're paying, they're upgrading their facility, paying a twenty five million dollar upgrade to the facility that they're moving into. That comes out to somewhere over three hundred thousand dollars.
And fees.
Fees. Remember, get back to that equation, you know, your local receipts, plus the state money, plus the taxes equal the budget. Or the local receipts, one of those is building fees, right? So you're getting the building fees portion in.
Right.
We'll continue to get the taxes that the facility currently pays. That does not change. This is tax money that we don't have. We never had it.
Well, and I think that's what people, so yeah, the, you're going to continue to get the same amount all along, whether they come or they don't come. If they do come into the community, the the taxes increase. And then at the end of the Tiff, you're going to get the full value. If they never came, you would continue to get that base level.
So let's let's play this out and assume BJ's for some reason pulls out in two years.
Yeah.
Don't want them to. I want them here for twen- I want them here for forty years, right?
Right.
But just say, for example, they leave. And I have a great example where it did happen, but we'll just use it. So they've spent eight million dollars on a parking garage. They now leave. Tiff goes away.
Yep.
That parking garage now gets assessed at its full forty four thousand dollar value.
People, they're going to pay it.
Forever.
That's being paid.
It just, it just, it goes on. Um, a a good example over on Crowley Drive, which is up by Assabit Valley. Um, company came in back in twenty fourteen for a Tiff.
LFB.
LFB Manufacturing, right? Built a beautiful building. We gave them a Tiff, I think it was fifteen year Tiff. Um, beautiful building. Pulled out.
Yeah.
Nev- never, never came in. So prior to them getting here, we, they got, they paid ten thousand dollars a year for property taxes, because there's no building. They built the building. Those taxes are now a hundred thousand dollars a year.
And we're collecting that regardless.
Collecting that to this day.
Right.
All right. And good news is resilience, the company's moving in there. Now they're revamping it. So we're going to get even more tax money when it comes in. But the city did not lose a dime
Right.
on that property. And and the the Tiff was based on relief when jobs came and they filled it up. Well, we got the building part.
They never, yeah.
But they never filled out there. But the city made out. And then, but that's what gets lost in some of the translations. So I I mean, I hope and I'm happy to talk to anybody that wants to.
It's complicated.
Well, well, the the state doesn't make things simple sometimes.
You're shocking.
But but again, it's it's an economic development tool, cities and towns can use
Right.
to help stimulate. Do you, you 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 want, you want industry in your community to help lower your residential tax? Now, you don't have to bring them in. We don't have to do economic development. But then, you know, salaries go up.
Right.
Health insurance goes up, retirements, a- all the budget continues to go up. Someone has to pay for it. So ask yourself, how do you want to do it? And I think through MEDC, the city has done an outstanding job balancing the new business coming into the city with the residential tax rate being able to stay, you know, steady and predictable, right?
That's our mission.
No wilds, and and that that's in essence what we want MEDC. If MEDC stopped bringing in business, that that steady, stable, predictable taxes goes right out the window.
Right.
It's not there anymore. And then then now it's, are we laying people off? Are we not building schools? Or we're not repairing, you know? Pick, pick your, what you want to kind of lower your budget as best you can.
Right.
So it's.
So that's a lot of information.
Yeah.
That's good. No, I love how you broke it all down.
No, and and again, I think um, you know, even one of the, one of the newspaper articles that was floating around and and lucky that we caught it, but it'd have been out there for a week before I was able to catch it. But you know, saying that they were going to be paying five percent of their taxes in year twenty, when actually it was, they're going to get five percent savings on that improved value. So it was completely opposite of that.
They would get the three thousand dollar credit on the tax bill.
Right. So, yeah. Anyway, so that's, that's the mechanics. You can decide whether you think it's a good idea or not, but that's how it works, right?
Just like people don't like taxes, there are people that don't like Tiffs. I mean, that that's, depends on what you are, what side you're on. But again, I look at it from a, how do I keep fun city services at a rate that residential taxpayers cannot get priced out of the city on?
Right.
And that's, that's kind of my, my driving force and
Right.
city government for a while now.
Love, twenty two years.
Twenty two years.
Twenty two years. So we only have a couple more minutes, but I did want to just touch briefly on um, a project that we're working on. We've done a couple of these over the last few years, but zoning changes. So that's another big thing that we're able to help the city council with. Um, and the city, we serve as the de facto planning department for the city of Marlboro. We work with MAPC to kind of draft zoning changes, things like that when we see things changing. We're working right now on Donald Lynch Boulevard. And you know, thank you to, for your help and the other city councillors that are involved. But we've done a few of these over the last couple of years. And you know, hopefully it'll, will help see um some changes. But you know, any thoughts on zoning changes and how how it's moving along right now?
Yeah, so remember, go back to the, one of the three functions of the city, of the city council, right? It was legislative. So zoning is one of those. We we we're the ones that are allowed to to change those uh uh rules. So uh zoning has been key. Kudos to councillors Irish and Tenere for trying to spearhead Donald Lynch Boulevard. As residents know, the malls down there. We want to make sure the mall thrives and survives. But should it not, what zoning or enhancements can we do to that area to make sure that that area still stays viable?
Right.
Um, so through MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
You got it.
They're they're helping us, assisting us in putting together uh some proposed changes that would allow some additional uses. Uh, the simple one is drive, drive throughs, right? That's, drive throughs aren't allowed there. Should we be able to set it up so that drive throughs can be allowed there? I mean, that's, that's a simple one. Um, but we're looking at those type of changes. We've engaged all the owners from the sports center to the mall, to all the businesses in between to provide us their input and thoughts. We've had public meetings so the public can participate. And we'll continue to take it. But when it gets to the point that we want to change something, it'll get submitted to
The city council.
The city council. And then there'll be a public meeting or a public hearing where the council, where the city residents can then weigh in, whether you're commercial or residential, you can weigh in and
Right.
give us your thoughts before any decision is made on if that's a valuable zoning change or not.
Well, and I think it's, it's been useful over the past couple of years. Like the, we did the neighborhood business district a few years ago when we were looking at Lincoln Street. And how do we really revitalize that area of the of the city? How do we, you know, less restrict, like less restrictions on things, increased density, things that we're looking for. Donald Lynch Boulevard has been all about, you know, post pandemic and post, you know, Amazon taking over the world almost. You know, when we're looking at the mall, we need to make sure that the city is positioned for future viability of that area, right? I mean, that's such a booming spot in the city with the sports center and all those things. We want to ensure that we're protecting that um asset down there.
And I try to re- remind the councils, this, this is our crystal ball time, right? I mean, we've set up, you know, the downtown village district, the uh new neighborhood business district on Lincoln Street, Route twenty, the wayside district. These don't come to, I mean, we've had the downtown village district now for about six or seven years. You know, all the nice projects that we wanted on Main Street and all.
Right.
Still haven't materialized. They're they're in various phases coming. But again, just because you make the zoning change, it's not an instantaneous change. So you've got to have some of the patience and some of the long term vision to say, this is where we want the city of Marlboro to look like. And
Delayed gratification, right?
Yeah. Usually, most of the councils aren't on the council when these things come to fruition. But you you hope they uh they all come out and work well.
I know. We were just saying that this morning, some of the downtown projects, a lot of the council, it's totally new faces, you know, that weren't involved back then. And so it's interesting to see how it takes time, but um it does take time.
I got a funny comment. Karen, say Metropolitan Area Planning Council three times.
No, thank you, Karen.
Wasn't there another word in there or no?
No, that's it. That's the one. So, all right, one more question for you before I let you go. And we asked um Arthur Berger on this last week as well. But since you've been around for a number of years, you've seen a lot of changes, you've seen a lot of the projects that MEDC has done, but even before MEDC. Do you, is there one project that sticks out in your mind that was in economic development? That is either the most transformative or just one that you think was kind of a model project or something that sticks out to you over your years of living here in Marlboro as something that was a game changer?
Well, it facilitated economic develop, because it wasn't pretty at the time. But the upgrades to the East and Westerly Treatment Plans. Again, it's not a, not a sexy topic.
Not at all.
But the the eighty billion dollar, I mean billion, million dollars that we invested, forty forty million dollars that we invested into those treatment plans to allow
Yeah.
the city to grow is i- i- is been, you know, now, again, not a sexy vote on a, on a sewer project, right? But but having that to allow residents to be hooked up to sewer, to have clean
Right.
uh water and sewer systems available to the residents, it's it's one of those infrastructure ones that you you almost need to have that facilitated all the the development.
Right.
And I mean, you mean, you touch on Apex and all the 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 highlight. They're great. I mean, but they're not, they're not here if we don't make those changes.
Yeah. Well, and I think we're thinking about that too in terms of long term. You know, Marlboro is a platinum level bio ready community. And we're talking a lot about manufacturing and bio manufacturing. That's the hot industry right now. And you know, really trying to think long term about, you know, making sure we're prepared for that to come into the community and and have, make sure we have the right infrastructure. So that's a, that is an interesting take. I love, but so Arthur said, uh, the sports center. That was his number one, you know, game changer was the sports center.
That, again, you you, it's there, but they could only expand
Right.
when we had the facilities to allow them to expand, to go from two rinks to four
Right.
to eight, six to eight to ten. So um, but no, I I would agree. I mean, that that, the sports, I mean, that that, that kind of spurred the whole tourism, I mean, sports industry.
Absolutely.
With four kicks, the William Street parks.
Right.
Uh, I mean, the, they're just bringing in people into the community and, you know.
Spending those dollars.
Well, I mean, that, we're we're here to kind of make sure that the funding can keep people
Right.
with the services they want
Right.
at a price they can afford. So that's kind of.
Heard it here first, folks.
And uh, and our, a good wrap up comment from Joanne, every residence, uh, every resident should watch this.
I one hundred percent agree.
Feel free to share.
To share, exactly. Yeah, so on that note, I think we have to poke fun at ourselves as well, Jill. So we, last week, we made a big deal about how it was episode eight and, oh my gosh, and this was actually episode eight. So we want to invite people to join us for episode nine next time.
Yeah.
Uh, really excited and want to thank you, President Oxing, for joining us today. This was a really great conversation. And um, I guess the last plea to anybody watching, if you have follow up questions, don't hesitate to ask them.